The regular planning commission meeting at 7:01 for the February 6th meeting. I'll rise for the pledge.
Pledge lightly to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I apologize to everybody, my voice is going. Try to keep my part to a minimum.
Need more water?
Belkey?
Here.
Henderson here, Shawla Zapson-Grant?
Here.
Peggy Jason?
Here.
Patterson?
Here. Everybody get a chance to look over the agenda? If there's no comments, additions, or anything, we will be looking for a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Should have the meeting minutes for the January 4th meeting. Probably get a chance to take a look at those and make sure Becky didn't make any mistakes. If nothing, we'll need a motion for that as well.
So how would I say, a motion to approve?
As presented.
As presented.
The meeting minutes of the January 4th meeting as presented.
Because of January 4th meeting as presented.
There we go. Motion unstable.
I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Any public comment before we move into our land split? Well then we once again have Mr. Joseph Herman here with us, he is looking for the approval. Island and at 73539 and Willy 73543 Fulton Street. We did go into the ZBA where we approved his split. Everybody's had the...
They're approved as variance.
As variance. Okay. Anybody got anything to discuss about this?
My understanding is that the ZBA allowed a variance so that he, his minimum lot, if we approve the lot splits, that he has a variance that those lot, small lot sizes will be fine. And also that he has a variance so that his minimum side yard requirements, he doesn't need to meet because the houses, the plot he had built between the area.
You can't really do anything with that.
So the only other thing that, that we should have looked at last time that we didn't was the depth of the lot. And part of that was because we didn't have all the measurements. And I had to say, very nicely done this time. Answers all the questions. But I don't see any reason why we can't. This little chart that he has here has got the minimums and then his actuals, and he's well within all of the requirements, so... That's what I see.
The only question I have, on your drawing that you gave us at the very, very first one.
Okay.
It says something about a fence. Is that an existing fence? We want to put in a fence.
Let's see.
On the certificate of survey on this one right here.
So...
Towards Fulton Street? Yeah, additional fencing outside.
Yeah, so the, along the driveway, the south side of the driveway that will go with the building in the back, putting a fence there is something that we haven't done, that we were considering doing, just so that it would separate.
I'd just like you to know that because we don't have the specifics of the fence with this, you will have to bring it in the form of a building permit, it's a no-cost building permit, but a building permit to the front office.
Okay.
To do the fence.
Did I give setbacks for the fence too?
That's why he'll have to bring it for the approval, because he didn't have everything here.
Yeah, and what I was told is, if I added anything, it's just going to complicate things right now.
It could, but it couldn't have. It'll just, the only, the only good thing is there's no cost to the building permit for the fence.
Building permit.
If it was something that you would have had to pay for building permit, you could have killed two birds with one stone, but there's no cost to that. Just, I wanted to FYI, before you just go put a fence in, you do have to come...
Come get a prep building permit. The other thing that I will need is for a sign, because we do, we are going to want to put a sign up at some point.
And that would also be a building permit.
Yeah, so.
Do you want those required another meeting year?
No, we can do a sign through the building part.
Right, okay.
But then aren't there requirements for how far the fence has to be from the lot line and all that?
Not from the lot line, from the road. Setback from the road.
Okay, so you could put it right on the end of the driveway. Correct.
Okay.
Really, so if you look at the house directly to the south, they have that little white picket fence that lines the sidewalk?
Right.
We were just going to do something that matched that, so that...
Just to separate it from the driveway.
Just to separate it from the driveway and, you know, curb appeal.
Anybody else?
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the lot split application creating 73539 Fulton, separate from 73543 Fulton.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that enough information?
Yeah, we have to change this, thank you. To approve.
Oh, so you have to sign it?
Yeah.
I'll be the sign.
Recap it. You have to sign here. You sign that.
Everybody got a pen now?
You're signing.
Over here on the bottom, on the bottom here.
Right, yeah. And you'll have to do it on the wall.
You, thank you. Good luck.
There we go.
You can keep one.
I keep this one.
In case anybody ever says to you, hey, you didn't have the right to do that.
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did. One, one set at a time, and we'll keep them.
Thank you very much for your...
Any, any else?
You're good, you're good.
Thank you. You might want to stick around to the end, though. You know, if there was anything that had to do with potentially getting this zoned different than residential, I would definitely stay, but I don't think that's on the agenda.
It's not?
Because they, I was a little surprised by it. I didn't ask for this, but at the variance meeting...
They shouldn't, we don't, we don't like to spot zone, and that's what we would be doing, to pick out one building in the middle of residential to zone it something else.
Just makes it so much easier for what it is, so... But they run it up, not me.
Except that you, you are actually operating under special approval land use. It was granted to Kraus Veterinary Clinic, so that's even why you can put office buildings in a residential district like that.
Right.
So you have the best of both worlds.
I, I just assume if we were ever going to rent office, we have to come in for a special every time, which is fine.
You do if you rent them out, because each business would have to be approved.
Come forward and be approved.
Right, right.
But...
All those kennels are in there, we have a little dog wash, they don't have a dog wash.
You need a dog wash in our bed, huh?
We do, and that's the thing, we, all the kennels are still in there. The hoses are in there, so...
Something to look at for later.
You guys have a good night, thank you.
You as well, thank you. Okay. We are into the zoning ordinance review. We got from planners, sections 11, 13, 14, 15, and 17. Anybody got anything that they found in there that needs to be looked at again? Becky stirred us up.
So there are a couple of things we had questioned. One of the things we had questioned was only allowing one access per parcel?
Right.
Unless it was a particular size. And did I also forward you guys their, her responses? So she made some good points, so it might be something to think about, to go back. She says she doesn't like the 300-foot restriction, and she thinks that residential parcels should be excluded from this restriction, so that's something to consider. Commercial parcels, she says she likes it to be at least 25 feet from adjacent residential zone property line, that could be added. So that's one thing you might want to look at, is, or we might want to revisit, so think about it, but we're not going to revisit, because it's in like three spots in section 10, that you're only allowed one, one access per main road.
And so she's suggesting that that doesn't apply to commercial, to residential?
It's residential, she's, yeah, she is suggesting that there's, you know, it shouldn't apply, it shouldn't be based on the, with the front edge of the property either, so... Again, just something to look at.
What other people, what, what's common in communities?
Well, I didn't ask that question, I suppose I could. What's the, what's the norm for a town like ours? I could, you know, and he did that before when we asked the density question, he came back with, like, communities, what their density, some of it was even greater than ours, so they do have that more at their fingertips than I do.
Yeah, that'd be nice to know, because even, like, I have 165 or something feet out front, and I have two driveways, but I wouldn't qualify. I mean, it's old, it's been there before the regulations, but...
But technically, we have a part in regulation that says we have to take all those out, we just never had.
Yeah, the one is a shared, right?
One's a share, yeah. Yeah, he owns most of it.
What's norm for...
Because on some little lots, it would be, do you really have room, or...
Well, so, and that, that was my thought, was, you know, if you only have a 70-foot lot, 70-foot wide lot, and you have two 20-foot wide driveways, what do you got left? You're going to end up with a bunch of garbage there, people park, not in garbage, but nothing landscaped or whatever, left there, so I'll ask. I'll send them another...
Or special circumstances, I could see like maybe if you were on a corner, and you had access entry on two sides, or...
I think you're allowed to do that if you're on a corner.
Now you said that's a 10?
Yeah, it's part of 1002A and then 1003C1.
And did we already move to 10?
We did, but it was, no, we, no, this is what she came back with.
Kind of has public comment, but yes, they have given you help.
Well, just because this affects me so tremendously, if the requirement is a 20-foot driveway, like Becky said, you have two of them, you've only got this little squad of land in the front, that, do you actually have to develop the 20-foot? I mean, 10-foot wide is slim, but you could get...
That was another...
There's a part in ours that says, but we changed...
We changed it to 20 feet.
Right, yeah.
We did, so that you could have two lanes.
I don't have 20 feet, I have, my house...
No, 20 feet wide driveway.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and I don't, I couldn't put it, I don't have a 20-foot driveway, I can't put in a 20-foot driveway. Because, unless it goes the other side of the house.
Yeah, but on your part, we don't care how wide your driveway is, but at the street access, it would have to be 20, is, is what our ordinance would, would deal with.
So just the apron out front has to be 20? Okay, well, that's fine.
So just at the, it's just the...
We can't control what they do on their property, for the most part, so it's where it would have to be.
Unless it was a new build in your driving plans.
It says driveway access, or road access, or something. That's how it's put in here, so...
So just a section right up on the street?
Yeah, where they usually pave that as it's coming into your driveway, that.
The apron on the outside, the outside, the sidewalk.
Sidewalk.
Between the sidewalk and the street.
The street has to be 20 feet.
But my issue is, I can't put a double-wide driveway in unless I put an additional driveway, so I have two vehicles, and if I want to get one, one's always going to be behind the other, so if I need the car out and the truck's behind it, village has ordinances that you can't park on your grass, so, and I really don't have a whole lot of room to do that, so I have to go out onto the street, park a truck.
Leave vehicle sitting there.
Run back out, get my car, take it out, put it in the street on this side, jump back into the truck, drive it up into the driveway, and then run back out and get my car. And vice versa to get the other one out, so, to have, be able to have two driveways would be phenomenal, even if I didn't make it a U to go all the way around, if I could just come in and park on the other side. Actually have a bigger lawn on that side.
Anyone, he had U driveways, I just don't...
Yeah, there are a few.
There are, we have many.
Yeah, I couldn't see them being 20 feet long for the whole U, because you...
Right, yeah, that's pretty wide.
Technically, the ordinance says that anything that existed, it changes to imply, so there shouldn't be any...
So there's lots of those, you know, my house is really, really old, so it was probably just made for a horse or buggy anyway, so they didn't need to have it very wide.
That's right.
So on that point, so if you go down to 1003C, it's got a whole bunch of reference material that we're strongly encouraged to rely upon. I wasn't able to find these things, so is that something that we have to go through mechanic to get our hands on?
What do you mean?
So 1003C, applications are strongly encouraged relating to following sources for access design, National Access Management Manual, National Cooperative Highway Research Program, Asset Management Guidelines for Activity Centers, Impacts of Access Management Techniques. So is that something, again, that's only available to mechanic?
I wouldn't think so, I would think that, that was something when this was written, that they, was available to anybody. I mean, they have report numbers and everything. And you said you looked them up, we couldn't get them?
I tried to look up one or two of them, just for grins and giggles, and it could have, it could have just been something where I just keyed in, you know, changed the order a letter the wrong way, but...
Well, I'll ask that too.
I mean, it was just a cursory search, I wasn't kicking over any rocks looking for anything too seriously.
But it shouldn't be really all that hard to find, because the average person isn't going to kick over rocks to find it, so...
You having luck with your Google?
No, not so far, but I'm not exactly tech savvy either.
Well, it might be a better idea to not reference the document, at least after 10 years. Does it come up?
I got the first one to come up, yeah. Whether it's that exact one they referenced.
Well, that's two of two, I imagine, that probably have a newer one, it's 20 years old already. Probably that's another point we should make, that those should be...
Yeah, she needs to update all of that and make sure that those are...
Or to do a notation, you know, to go to a third party that can direct it to the most current, rather than something that might, and we could publish this and that document's gone in two weeks, then...
Right, right.
We don't have control over it.
Right. All right, so that's on 10. Anybody got anything, 11, 14, 15, 16, and 17?
Did everybody read her response to the one for one replacement of trees?
Yeah, sorry, I didn't. 1109?
Yep, 1109. Said the standard is tied to an approved landscape plan, it's saying that if a business has two shrubs shown on landscape plan, they die, the business is required to replant what is shown on landscape plan, does not apply to private property unless there's a landscape plan tied to it, like a subdivision plan.
Okay.
Because we did have that question.
I'm good with that. That's for nature.
I had nothing on it.
On 13?
Yes.
03, it looks like the letterings are off. I didn't, I wasn't able to print it, but that's my note here, is that rework the lettering on it?
I thought we had gotten over that with her before.
Some of it we can't, but what lettering are you just...
A, B, C, D, I think she just...
Oh, there's no G. Oh, yeah, okay.
All that lettering.
Yeah, it's just, I don't think they'll necessarily redo that when they go through and conform all of the, you know...
Right.
Subsection letters.
So say it was done in Word, Word should automatically auto correct that.
If you put it in that way. If you did it manually, it won't.
Okay, yeah, well, I got it cut out. Anything else?
No, I have 13.5B circle at 30%, we were all agreed with...
We fixed it, we made it 30%, yes. That's, one spot said one thing, and one spot said 30, so we changed them both to 30%.
Okay, all good. 14, I really thought she might suggest something for LEDs.
All she says is this is where it should be added, what that meant, so where do we add it, how do we add it?
What, yeah.
So we do need to...
A little more explanation there.
Well, how is she going to add it? Give me the reference where she's going to put it, so it can be reviewed.
So she's just saying that 14 is where it should be added?
Correct, because truly the only thing I sent her for 14, I think, was that it didn't address LED like you...
Right.
Because that one I was confused with as well, because, I mean, not just LED, but what if you have new technology that comes up?
Well, but each new technology, you're going to have to kind of address on your own, on its own, because you can't really, you don't know how to restrict something that you don't know is that, is invented yet. If it exists yet, we don't know, so we don't know how to restrict, or how to make it point, or how strongly it could have it.
Because I mean, it's a lot, it's a lot like the vehicles with the newer headlights, and newer headlights are ridiculously bright, but according to the government, they're quote, "okay to use."
But that's what I mean, we can't, it's hard to, I, I see your point, because obviously things have changed since this one was written, but I don't know how to address lights that aren't there. Planning Commission maybe, unless you just put something in there that they'll address any new type of lighting thing as, you know, as they come, but...
I'm not quite sure how to word that.
I don't know either, and that's, but I'll ask her, because she's got to tell us how the LEDs live in there, because there's no reference to that in there either.
And we're adding that to the end of 14, correct?
Well, the LED could be anywhere where that's, I want her to tell me, where are we, where are we going to put it, and how are we going to restrict its use? You know, are we restricting the wattage, the color, the, you know, what?
Anybody was 15?
One more?
No, I have nothing. Oh, 15 was cell towers? She said we have to leave it in there.
Yeah, there's not much we can do.
Yeah, we did, we did not even review it, because we asked her if we even had to leave it, but there are some stipulations that we can still, to create better standards than what's required, so she said to leave it.
Okay. All right, 17.
I'm going to suggest for that first line, that it causes the perception that we're trying to control things outside our borders, if we change that interest or purpose, that extends beyond the borders, that, that impact, has impact beyond the borders?
That would be a better way, especially based on what she said.
Yeah, that, that way it's clear we're not trying to control it, but we know that there will be impact beyond our control.
Right.
That's my suggestion.
That impacts beyond the borders of...
That has impact beyond, sometimes.
Her explanation was good?
Yes.
But I can see the whole... That was always a question.
Just that first one line.
All right. That brings us into 18.
I think he's really confusing.
Okay, very tired reading, or whatever, in the ones I did before.
This little review thing down here, it doesn't help much, the, doesn't, I've never got a good description, what's the difference between a site plan and a sketch plan, and when am I supposed to submit what? And I'm, like, when I was developing my building, I'm supposed to know how complicated this development job is, so I'm supposed to know what paperwork I'm supposed to submit? It's like, I know nothing. I'm just bumbling my way through this, I don't, if we could set it up so that we are expecting our customer to know hours when it's up there. Because I went and, and then I compared, like, I went through, there's not much about this one that I knew. Like, when you get to the, these charts? There's never, there's not a good...
Oh.
Yeah, seven, there's not a good description of site plan versus sketch plan, except that site plan has greater level of need for information, right? And then, then we get to 18.9, where it's for site plans, and it's this much, and we get to 18.10, it's site plans and sketch plans.
Right.
And it's this much, and then there's a separate for...
All plans.
It's like, what? They're, they're not, and then, and then I took that, and I, and I looked at our application, and our application does not align with our ordinance, and our, half the stuff we say we need in the ordinance, we're not asking for, we're asking for stuff on here that we don't need according to the ordinance, it's like... So what I, the other thing I did is I went and looked at other communities, and what do they do, I mean, we have copies of stuff from 2006, this, you know, the fee schedule has, says down here, it's passed in 2007, and it's from 2016, and, I mean, we just look, like, you know, we can do a little better in detail here. So I went and looked at some of the other communities, and what do they do, right? They're, they're like two, this is one page, this is for SALU. There, there are like two, this is one page, this is for SALU, right? Site plan, this is the one that I used in Alvin Ag, I know it works real well.
Okay, but all of those are just getting the information, they're not telling you what else you need.
This one has, yes, they do. This one has a list of, here's your checklist, this is everything you need, here's our procedure, one, two, three, four steps. Tells you what the procedure is, right? A lot of them are like that, they're just, they're not very complicated. And even, even when you get to Sterling Heights, which is the third largest city in the state, right? They still have a two and three page thing. They're recommending that you do, you're gonna be planning for a pre-preliminary, if you've got a big job, or you think you might have a big job. There's a form for that, and then your, your actual form is a couple of pages. These are, this is the pertinent information we need, check the box.
So do we charge them to come for their pre-planning thing?
I don't think so.
But we don't always hold meetings if there's nothing on the agenda, so what's supporting the planning commission then? With the exception of the zoning ordinance, we don't meet unless we have something on the agenda, so how do I, how do you put some...
I thought I mentioned that in here.
Well, I'm not saying that we shouldn't charge fees, I'm just saying that our information should align with our ordinance, and our fees are, should be, right? I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it needs to be this complicated. You're expecting the person who's applying to know all this stuff about, it's like, can we just write it for ordinary people and make it be...
Okay, for sake of argument, what, what do we need to change?
Well...
How do we need to change? Don't, don't say, here does this, and here does this, and here does this. Well, how does our...
For example, I would not have three levels of review. Let's just have one level of review. This is what we need. We'll decide, you know, bring it in here, we'll look at it. If it's not complete, we're gonna send it back to you. If it is, we'll decide whether, if it's an administrative review, it says back in there that an administrative review has the same paperwork and everything as a, as any other one, so, so why break it out that way? We'll just, when we, when it comes in, we should be the ones determining the level of service that they need, not them. They don't, they don't, we're the...
Well, we do, we do determine.
But this, I mean, this application is like, even when I was doing it, I had no idea that there was a sketch plan review is different from a site plan review, because it's not really drawn out. The nomenclature is not consistent, so you don't, you can't really go through and logically say, okay, that's for a site plan, okay, that's for a sketch plan. It's not, it's not like that.
So again, I'm gonna ask, what do we need to do?
It, I would suggest that we start with, this is what we need, and, and a clear process, right? This is, you know, whoever...
I understand what you want us to do. How does it need to change?
The actual thing?
Yep.
It needs more...
Everything, you start from the beginning. You wanna go to our application, start with the application.
I'm not gonna, I, I don't think that we should, we should have an off-site where somebody goes through all this stuff. This is a big job, I don't think...
That's why I'm asking.
The three of us here should sit here and go through this line by line, because you need to go through and determine what all this is, and then you make a form that asks for, that follows what you're asking for. I mean, this just doesn't, this just doesn't work. My opinion.
Okay, so what, what needs to change in the ordinance?
I think there should be somebody, maybe it's the planner, maybe it's two or three people from the committee, that'd be happy to volunteer and work with the planner, go through this, and make it less complicated, less onerous on the person doing it, more direct, um, just, you know, it's just like... It's hard to, it's hard to muddle through.
It is confusing. But this is that.
It's only confusing when you read it the first time.
Right.
As, as often as...
But that's what the...
Because the majority of the person, it's not, it's not their job to interpret, it's our job to interpret our ordinances for them. I'm not, I'm not entirely disagreeing with Sam that it is confusing for somebody coming to say, I don't know what I need to do. It is your job as the, as the chairperson to say, this is what you need.
Right.
And bring that to us.
When we're talking about preliminary, that's what she's saying, or that's what, that's what our ordinance says under conception plan, is that they can come to us and say, this is what I'm considering, what do I need to have?
That we had them do before.
But yes, it's very confusing as to figure out how...
However, it's also not our job to tell them what fits. They have to bring their ideas to us for us to say it does or it doesn't, not for us to tell them how to change it to make it fit.
No, I'm not suggesting that we do all that for them, but I'm suggesting we can certainly make the process a lot easier to understand and clearly worded and step-minded, you know, one, two, three, four, this is what we're...
But everything isn't a one, two, three, four. I understand what you're saying, I truly, I truly do, I'm not arguing with you, but everything isn't one, two, three, four. That's the problem. Everyone is just a tad bit different. So you kinda have to have a broader process, a broader explanation, so that you cover everybody, so somebody can say, well, that doesn't apply to me, you can't make me do that, so...
Well, that's not, that's not been my experience, but...
I'm not, again, I get trying to make it easier for them, because I'm the one that talks to everybody that says, I don't understand any of this, so...
Even when I did it my own self, I didn't, I didn't understand, and I came and I got answers, and I came back and came back and came back, because we go back and read the stuff and try to be self-reliant, read things, figure it out, but I can't figure, I can't figure it out. And I'm truly, I have experience in this, you know, I mean, I...
Not in the planning section, but, so what's the next step?
I just said she was an applicant.
I was an applicant, she was, but, so, so what do you guys wanna do? Do I make a committee to, to make this plain English? Do you, you wanna say the whole next meeting is gonna be us sitting here discussing this being plain English? What don't people understand, what do people understand?
I think it needs a rewrite, and we'll come back and talk about it. That would be my opinion.
But I, they're not gonna rewrite it without us telling us, telling them how to rewrite what we're looking for. If I tell them how I wanted it simple, they're just, they're not, that's not what they're gonna do. And simple to them is way different than simple to us.
Right.
So, we have to offer our suggestions to them and not just make it simple.
If you wanna put a hold on moving forward, we can stay with 18, maybe look at it section by section in our meetings, and see if we can simplify the...
Sam could take it from her point of view as an applicant and say, this is what I have problems with, so this is how I'd like to see our process to be. Either one of those two could act as if they are the applicant and, or some of the applicants we've had, what did they... As Al said, he was very confused when he even read the chapter. So somehow, some way, we have to come up with the ideas to give to the plan.
Do you get a lot of questions, like, do you find someone over and over?
I don't, I truly don't. I get, I, when somebody calls and says, I'd like to, you know, or comes in and says, I need to go to the planning commission, it really depends on what they're doing, what information they really need to provide. I get that we can't put all of that in here, so the general information is, I need your lot size, your lot dimensions, your building dimensions, what you intend to use it for, based on your use, your, where your garbage dumpster's gonna be, how much traffic you're gonna have, how many employees you're gonna have. So I can tell if you have enough parking spots, if your dumpster's in the right location, do you have enough room to do what you wanna do? So that's where the general has to come in. Some things, C2 downtown, C1, does not apply, parking doesn't apply. So that's not something they have to tell me, but they still do need to tell me their number of hours, and what kind of business they are, and how many employees you're gonna have, how big the building is. So some of that is all the same. Then they come to planning. Then they put the information together, and that's when they submit their application with their money and come here. So, in essence, that could be the, um, the preview. They hand it to me, I tell them the missing information, so they don't even get to come to planning until they provide that information. Our ordinance does allow them to come twice without an additional fee. Any more than twice, they have to pay half the, the third time they have to pay half the application fee again. I believe the fourth time they repay the whole application fee. So, those are just the kinds of, I don't get...
That's the question that I had then.
I think it's on our sheet, um, our fee sheet. Again, we just have to, we have to come up with what we want. Our ideas for the planner, to let the planner say, that's too simplistic, let's add this or this, or, yeah, that, that would work. Or, that won't work in this instance, so how are we gonna address, whatever.
I would like to make, you, you brought some examples, I mean, I don't, I don't understand all of this, but I'm just saying, so you've got examples here compared to ours, can you say, hey, we want it to look more like this one?
These are, these are the, I brought examples of the forms.
Not the ordinance.
Not the ordinance. Um, I did look at just the city of Sterling Heights, because it was the biggest one, to see how closely, you know, things were aligned, and they were, they were pretty good. You could, you could go from the website information to their form and not feel like you totally had, you know, different numbers. So, that's the only one I looked at at any depth, because then I realized, this is a really big job. This is a big job to redo it. I don't, I don't really know the best way to do that, and I don't, um... I don't know that it would be a good use of time if we sat here and went through every, everyone...
Unless we make the suggestion of the change, though, there, the planner will do nothing with it, it'll stay just the way it is.
Where did this come from?
That was actually going to be my question.
Oh, it came from our previous one, it was came from something before that, and...
And he took it from a template from another community?
Parts of it are picked from templates, correct, so...
Well, we can always revisit 18 after we've had a chance to do a little bit more research.
Well, and I can, I can ask the planners, but I truly can't see them giving me a simple form without asking me what I want simple, what is simplified.
So that's what we need to decide how we want our application to look if it needs to change.
Well, Sam made a valid point, the application should complement the ordinance, so, but one's gotta come first, so...
Right, well, can they, can we, do we have to talk about the three different levels of review? Nobody else talks about the three different levels of review in there.
Well, not in their thing, do they in the ordinance?
No, they don't, they don't talk about...
You looked up their ordinances online as well?
On some of them I did, yeah. Sterling Heights is the one that I went through more in depth, and I will do that, I'll do that in the meantime, but they don't, um, say...
So, in your mind, the part that makes it complicated is that they've talked about three different things when we kinda treat everything the same?
I, I'm not sure that's the right way to characterize it. It's complicated in a lot of different ways, and I think it doesn't help that I'm expected, as an applicant, I need to know which one I have to... My, my, I don't get three separate applications, I get one, I get four or five pieces of paper with all of the stuff that I need for any one of those I, I pick out, right? It's not really, it's, it's not really clear, and then when you get back here, it's like, well, okay, what is a, what is a MARS? I mean, what are the definitions of how do I, how do I know which one I'm supposed to submit for? I'm just a schmo person, right? I mean, how do I, um, if I, if I have...
The information on the front page of our application is the information you need for any of those. Project name, what is it?
This not, it says site plan prepared by, that's not asked for in the ordinance anywhere. It's, we, we want the name and the address of the property owner, if they're not the owner, but it doesn't, we don't wanna know who... The ordinance doesn't ask who the site plan is prepared by. It does ask who the property owner is, if you're not the legal property owner, that's not on our form.
It does say applicant name and owner name, though.
Pardon me?
It says applicant's name and owner's name, so that would be, they're different, on the very front page.
It says if you are not the legal owner...
Yeah, but there's a, there's a sign for, a place to sign for the applicant, and a place to sign for the property owner.
The ordinance asks for the name and the address for the property owner up here, right after applicant is, is the same file. If not, it's just not...
No better explanation.
Could be better aligned. So I will go and look at these different communities and see how they define their process, to see if they have three levels. Because they just had, they had a separate, separate applications for site plan, and then a separate one for special pool of revenues. They were one or two pages, each one was pretty clear.
So you're saying between the, um, the sketch plan, the site plan, you would rather see that put all into, this is our application for what we need for any one of them, so...
No, actually, that's what we have, and she was more like, she, she'd like an explanation, and I get that, an explanation, what's the difference between site plan, a sketch plan, or administrative review?
So how do, how do I know what I'm supposed to do if I don't, if there's no definition? I can't align my project to any definition, because I don't know what it is. So my suggestion was to just, you know, ask for what we need and don't call it separate tiered things. I think that makes it confusing, because then you have, if you just need what you need, then just ask for that, and... Big projects are gonna have more information to submit anyways, I mean, isn't that, doesn't that just sort of follow?
You can't assume that anything follows, that's part of, part of, that's why some things are more worthy in the book than they truly need to be for the average person, I, trust me. But I'll, I'll, I'll pose a few questions, I'll call the planner, I'll ask him, but I think we should...
I'm listing a copy of our application and what it looks like.
Oh, yeah. And, but it isn't even just the application, it's, you know, it's the, there's, I'm just gonna, the other point I'm...
I would like to see a, a, a written process, okay? You know, step one, you submit, step, step two, we, we give it to all our professionals to review, step three...
I don't think that should be in the ordinance, I think that should be a, a process, a policy.
Right, that's fine. The customer, the customer should know what the process is, because they're not gonna know if it's gonna arrive, they don't know if things are taking too long, or, or missing a step, or they have no ability to...
But they do, because truly, I, we try and get these guys in and out in two meetings, so they're told at the meeting, this is what's not right, or this is what's right. I mean, it's, there's no steps that, they don't, they don't, they don't know anything that happens between meeting one and meeting two anyways, so...
We've gotten stuff, we've gotten, um, site plan review things that have not been to the professionals to be reviewed.
Everything doesn't go to them to be reviewed.
Then I, why should, we should know that? Then we should know it didn't go because, or, here, here are your reviews. I don't, I don't remember ever getting anything with a, I said, a checklist. This is what, you know, fire department, whatever, who, whoever, everybody, everybody looked at, anybody have any comments? Yes, these are what they are. Then that goes with plan to planning as part of the fact, part of the information they need to make a decision.
Well, I'll ask a few questions, but I don't think you guys should do anything with section 18 tonight. There are any decisions or anything.
Anything else we wanna cover, as long as we're coming up with questions, we can, in section 18.
So are you making a motion to table, or just...
No, you discussed section 18, you don't have to...
Okay.
Yeah, it was on the agenda, it was discussed. It just wasn't, no, nothing was finished, nothing... I think actually, um, and this is just a suggestion. I might, um, ask the planner, especially since we changed some of our meetings to Wednesday, because the next couple of, the next couple of, um, sections are probably out of all of our leads.
Okay, yeah, which ones?
Um, site condominiums, building unit developers.
That's a good idea.
So, um, I, I know he has mentioned he'd be happy to come, I just don't know on what kinda notice I'd have to give him, so... Let's, um, because March is just one of those we put on a Wednesday, so... Let me see if Wednesday's a good day for... Let me see if one says a good day for him, and maybe, maybe ask him, ask him to come while we discuss those chapters, to better explain and answer them questions, and maybe offer ways to modify or adjust them and things.
Right, good idea.
And even if he can't come to marches, then March would just be adopting the DDA budget, and we have him come on a, whatever day he can come, something like that.
So obviously, we're gonna do eighteen, and then you gotta...
I would not make any, yes, we have to redo eighteen, but I would not make any suggestions for next time.
Yeah, I said, I don't think I want to move forward until we decide.
So I'll wait until Brian can come, quite honestly.
Okay, everybody could put the ordinance review?
I just, I got a question.
Certainly.
Just let me find it here. It was eighteen oh five. I'm sorry, eighteen five. I'm sorry, back to eighteen two. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I thought I heard us. It was something, it was about, uh... The, the size of things, or was that mentioned, um... I could find it, or...
The excess of structures to...
Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry, it was two D, notes, types of plan, reviews, site plans, sketch plans. Like, they use words like smaller, and larger, and stuff. Do those need to be defined? You know, I'm just curious, because a lot of times I'm reading stuff in here that say two big words, and I don't know if I should be zeroing in on stuff like that.
Nope, that's okay, and that's a question we can ask the planner to explain why, or what other way it could be referred to. See, somebody does that all the time, understands what a smaller scale project is, somebody, you know, we don't. And the same thing with the site condominiums, we don't understand any of that, so it's kind of hard for us to amend or review any of that. So, but I put a note in there, we'll ask him when he comes, that kind of, that's the kind of stuff. Make notes of all of that, we'll ask him to explain it all, or offer suggestions, or why it's the way it is, and we can offer ways that we'd like to see it to fit us a little better.
Good.
Okay, everybody else with eighteen?
Like, I saw, like, it was eighteen thirteen, they were talking about the lighting and stuff again, so, like, again, L E Ds weren't mentioned. So, like, the previous section, like, we're gonna review, and you got, and we're today talking about that. So whatever that is, get referred back to that.
Carried through, correct.
That's it for me.
All right, then, if we're ready, we're moving into DDA.
This one, can I maybe make a mark on? This is the one I want, right?
One page?
Yeah, this one.
We're supposed to have more than the one page, or?
No.
Okay.
Just an update, and then?
This will be the one that we'll go over tonight, and will I have a motion to send it to council?
We're gonna go over twenty-four also? Did I, I haven't seen anything new?
No.
We just seem to know, or not.
We can get this one.
Yeah, that's the one I saw, right?
It's a good one.
I kind of miss, we used to have that lady that came here and explained all this stuff to us.
Well, I can explain it real, real easy. As we've said in the past, basically, the DDA can only pay the bond, and any fees associated with the bond. Until the bond is paid off, that's all it can do with its money. So, little percentage of taxes gets collected strictly to the DDA, and goes to DDA to pay the bond. So, next year, we're gonna estimate the taxes to be twenty-seven thousand dollars. We have a bond issuance payment every year, yearly of seven hundred fifty bucks. Principal payment will be thirty thousand dollars, and the interest will be eight thousand and ten dollars. Do you have it now, or no?
No, I'm sure, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
It should have been on...
That's okay.
Do you mind if there's extra in the capture value here? They can't, they just have to hold it for next year's bond payment?
Correct. Because in case there's a year that the taxes don't cover the bond payments. So, until the bond is paid off. So that leaves a total expense of thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars, which means for next year, we'll have to use eleven thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars of prior year funds, money that's left over from this year.
Which is that thirty-one, which is what figure?
Correct, well, so, the beginning of the fiscal year is gonna be forty-two thousand dollars. Beginning of twenty-three, April first of twenty-three, it'd be forty-two, seven eighty-one.
One, two, three, okay.
After we add the money and take out the expenses next year, we expect the balance at the end of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four to be thirty-one thousand, twenty-one dollars.
So that's three thirty-one, twenty-four.
Correct.
And if I may, you, you will see a fluctuation there when you're putting in that estimated number. DDA is not part of your regular taxes. DDA is a capture that was voted in to, when you defined the DDA district. Just that portion of the village pays that additional tax. So, when you're determining you have X number of parcels, there are values at X amount of, of tax assessment, but you'll have things that will change that. You'll have, at the end of the year, you'll have delinquent taxes. You could have something where somebody's business took off the whole south side of the building, because they wanted to make more parking lots. It's gonna change the assessments, so that number will fluctuate. So you can't always say, well, gee, I'm gonna have extra money because we estimated it to be this. It may not be that at the, at the end of the year, so...
Some question?
Go ahead.
Because you said that defined, that defined district pays an additional tax. They pay an additional...
They pay, they pay, no, they pay their taxes as estimated, but only the revenue from that district can be cut out and put into your DDA district.
Do we know what the boundaries of that district are?
Yeah, there's, there's defined, um, DDA plans in there.
There is. I don't have it on me, but there is. I'll be happy to make a copy and show you. That'd be great.
Can I get a copy as well?
Anybody have a copy, sure.
Thank you.
Part of the, um, DDA plan, part of the TIP plan, so... So that being said, that would still leave thirty-one thousand, twenty-one dollars and eighty cents at the end of the year, providing things are, again, as Joe said, there's fluctuations and nothing's ever... The only thing that's gonna be right is the bond payment, the interest payment, and paying agent fee, so... They do, or they, they do have enough money, General doesn't have to loan them any money, so...
That's good, and then when will this be done?
The bond is paid off in...
Let me see, wasn't it twenty...
Twenty...
Twenty twenty-seven.
So like, three thirty-one, twenty-seven?
I can't answer that question.
I think it paid off in April, I think it's paid off in April.
April twenty-seven?
Yeah.
I can't answer that thing.
But, you need, and then that's the, the twenty-year DDA district bond will be paid off. But you gotta remember, you've gotta continue with that DDA plan and reinitiate it, because the DDA, like Becky said, the general fund's been paying that bill for a long time now. Not because anything was mishandled, but just because of, in oh-eight, when the real estate just dropped, everybody's assessments went to next to nothing, you can buy a house for a thousand dollars in some towns. Those were out of the DDA's control, so the general fund is, the general fund is obligated to take care of all bonds through any of the departments of the village. So, it, it was just automatically had to stepped up to the plate and make those payments. But the DDA is obligated to reimburse the general fund for those payments. So you'll want to reinitiate that bond, and it will continue to collect those tax revenues. But at that point, you guys will change your budget process so that it will have, I would probably say the same thing as the obligations that we have right now, that you can't make anything but the bond payment. You will first and foremost be paying back the general fund's obligation, and then depending on how many years you up your bond, or your district for, you could start to collect money that the DDA could use for other things. Just don't jump into big projects right away, and, till you've collected enough money to...
So you said, once the, once this gets paid up in April twenty twenty-seven, then we would reissue that bond?
You will reinstate that.
Reinstate, what does that mean exactly? I don't know.
You'll vote it in.
Who votes it in?
The constituent, yeah, the village.
Public.
The bond, not the bond.
Not the bond, the DDA district.
The district is there for thirty years.
Okay.
The district is defined for thirty years.
So, okay, so then the district is gonna, the public has a chance to re-up the district?
Yes.
And we need to do that because the general fund has to pay it back?
No, the DDA pays back the general, the general fund's been paying the DDA's bond.
Okay, and it, and that's why you have to keep, you have to vote the district back in?
If you don't, you don't collect the taxes.
Right, the general fund will be, just be out the money.
You don't collect the taxes.
The general fund will, in fact, have paid for the, whatever those are.
Yes, the bond payments that it paid for, it won't get reimbursed for.
So after twenty twenty-seven, is this process that we're doing tonight, is that gonna continue?
It will, as long as you keep your DDA district, it'll have to have a budget, because it's going to collect taxes.
To pay back the general fund after that?
Well, that's, 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 but then even when the general fund's paid off, then you can, if there's a small project, a small improvement in the downtown area that the DDA wants to fund, that's what...
Can you explain to me what a DDA is?
Downtown Development Authority.
Oh.
Okay, so, you'll still have a budget as long as you're collecting DDA taxes.
Right.
You'll still have the same process, it's just that your expenses might look a little different.
So we could assume that, or, I'm asking, how long do you think it would take to pay back the general fund? It's not likely, it, it could be ten years.
Oh, I, I don't have that number on top of my head.
No, yeah, good.
I have to look that up.
It's been supporting, the, the general fund has been supporting the DDA since two thousand eight.
At least.
Right, so you've got...
Even prior to that?
No, 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 the general fund was not paying the bond payment prior to two thousand eight, because DDA was paying the bond payment.
When did it, when did it crash? When did the money go away?
No, that's when it crashed, but they were, we were still collecting money. But they were spending more money than they were collecting in other things. That's why they lost all the money they had built up. So, it's only been recent, and I don't wanna give a number of years, but it's not been, you know, ten years that the general fund's been paying the bond, no. In the last couple of years, well, last year, this year, the DDA had enough money to do it on its own.
I think it did last year, too.
Last year it did, but the year before, we put money in for the general fund.
Put some, some money in for the bond.
It's, it's not, I don't anticipate ten years, let me put it that way, but I can't tell you, because I don't have the exact...
Yeah, just an idea. And so this, so next year, will it be thirty-eight, or will it be less?
It's actually more.
It's more?
Yes.
Oh, okay, it's going up?
Yes. Next year will be thirty-five will be the bond payment.
Oh.
And six thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven fifty will be the interest payment. So yes, it's a reverse amortization.
So they'll keep getting bigger and bigger as we...
The last, the last two are forty thousand dollars. There's a couple at thirty-five.
Plus the interest, forty plus the interest?
Correct, so, there's two at, two at thirty-five, and two at forty.
Then we have to pay all that back.
Right. Well, you don't have to pay all that back, because DDA is paying it.
Or they're paying their own bond now.
Right, general fund is not currently paying. So I need a motion to accept the prepared budget to send to council for approval.
I just have one quick question before we do that. So I had someone ask me a question regarding this, and after everything is all squared away, with the village being, the general fund being repaid, what happens then to that line item? Is that something that falls...
What do you mean, that line item, that?
Uh, the bond, or the...
Yeah, it will have a zero in it, there'll be no, nothing associated with it.
You should probably leave it right on your budget, because any project that the DDA gets into a position that they can do, it will be a bond.
Well, the, the question where I'm going at is, say somebody wants to do a project, doesn't matter what the project is, would they come to us, or would they go to the village and say, hey, look, we'd like to do this project in the village? How do we go about doing it? You have this DDA village that you're collecting.
They'll go to the authority.
Everything is squared away with all the bond payments, so once that's all settled, who determines where they want to get spent after that?
It has to be for whatever it's proposed for, when...
But he's asking, do they go to the DDA, do they go to council?
They go to the DDA to present the project. The last project was the, was the downtown pavement, Main Street, that initiated at the DDA level. DDA level puts together the plan, and how much it gets the estimates of how much it's going to cost, gets the engineering in, presents it to council. It's the council's credit, or council's, I'm coming up with the name of that, financing authority, the council's...
They, they have to approve it, because general is, is the fallback if the DDA can't make the payment.
The council is, is the one...
Is the guarantee.
Guarantee getting that money for that project.
And do you see the DDA going back to an independent board like it was before, away from planning at some point?
That would be a council thing, I mean, honestly, I don't, I don't, myself I don't, only because you'd have to find, um...
A little board?
Correct, you have to...
It's a big board, too, it's twelve or fifteen?
No, no. Five.
Five?
Five or seven.
Yeah.
But it would also have the stipulations of, you know, X number have to live here, and only if you can not live in the village, so... I, that would be a council decision, it was council's decision to put it to plan it?
Right.
I see.
Okay, thank you.
And you really won't have a whole lot of business, even once the bond's paid off. The DDA, especially in our, our case, since we're such a little village, you're not gonna have a whole lot of money to do a whole lot of projects, or, and which was kind of part of the problem with the last DDA is, you know, they wanted to fund celebrations, and they wanted to do barbecues, and they were buying things, and it just... Too much too soon, so, you really need to either, you know, hold off your projects till you've got the money to pay for it in cash, or if it's a larger project, which most DDA projects are, and most of them are bondable, depending on, on what they are, you're not gonna do a lot of little ones that you'll just decide and do what you wanna do within the confines of just the DDA. It's gonna be combined with village, not money, but with authority, and, and determining what's gonna work and what's not gonna work. So, it's not like you're gonna, you'll have this whole list of projects to pick from, it just doesn't work that way.
Okay.
Next one? I make a motion to approve the DDA budget for April twenty-three to March twenty-four, as presented.
I'll second.
And send it to council.
To send to council, yes. Thank you.
All those are catered?
Aye. Aye.
Becky has something for us.
Send that over to me now.
Reports.
Um, last time I brought up about food trucks, I just wanted to let you know that I have actually reached out to neighboring communities now to see how they handle them. Do they allow them? Do they not? And I'm only starting just today. I started getting answers back. Because, you know, you have local businesses, you have local restaurants and now you're taking, you know, that kind of stuff. So how are they dealing with them? And what, what level do they deal with it on? The two I've gotten back, actually, it's a council thing. It's not a planning thing. So just updating you because I brought it up a month ago.
Thank you.
And then the other thing is St. Baldur's, they're doing a St. Baldur's thing at the fair in March. And I was asked about putting a sign, a portable display sign on the approach by the fair gate. And we would not allow that by our ordinance. But I told him if he goes 100 feet down the road, he's in the township and he can call them. Just so you know.
Yeah, cause they could do it at the east gate.
Do it wherever they want, as long as it's outside of the village. So I told them, you know, in the village, we're not going to allow that type of a sign that up close to the road. So.
But we would approve other temporary signs.
We would, but not one that's.
Not a giant one, though, right?
Yeah, we did one, a huge one. So that's all I have.
At this time, I don't have anything under reports. Does anybody have anything to add? Were meeting, questions?
I do not.
Comments? Okay, there's one final motion we're looking for.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
This is the one.
813.
Second?
Second.
Who's in favor?
Hi.
Aye.
We are done.